City Manager, you can start whenever you're ready.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Council. So, I'm here to talk about what's actually your final presentation for the retreat. I know there'll be some follow-up discussion afterwards, but we'll work through this presentation. This is going to address the status of our office space and land utilization project. Y'all may recall that this project actually began during the budget preparation for fiscal year 1718, when a bunch of departments, ours included, asked for some piecemeal additional space, office allocation, some additional storage for staffing growth, material growth, storage growth, tools and equipment that each department has kind of gone through, you know, some growth in the last several years. And so, City Manager Donna Baron and staff, management staff, said, hey, we don't want to do this piecemeal approach, right? We want to step back and take a holistic approach, you know, look at these facilities, not only what do we need today, but what do we need long-term into the future? What kind of staffing impacts will we have as the city continues to grow? And then we start talking about staffing impacts when we take on Castle Hills and that sort of thing. So, the goal was, and what you all approved in the FY 1718 budget, and then again in this budget year, was some additional funds for a professional service agreement with an architectural firm to do some of that detailed space planning and allocation work. And so, what we did, we went through an extensive search process, we did an RFQ, interviews, and we ended up hiring the firm of Park Hill Smith &amp; Cooper to perform this work. And the work that they're going to do for us, or that they're in the middle of doing for us, is detailed facility assessments, looking at the different facilities, what's the condition of them, what's the effect of life, what can we do perhaps to extend the life of those facilities. They're also looking at staffing projections, department by department, in those facilities that we've got under contract right now. And then, you know, what can we do to create the needed office space for those departments? So, what we've got under contract right now is those facilities at the municipal annex, Fred Herring Recreation Center, and the Keighley Complex out there at Valley Ridge and Keighley, extended all the way down the north side of Valley Ridge to the wastewater treatment plant. You'll see a little bit today, we have, you all have authorized funding for an additional phase that would look at the police department, the central fire department, look at the condition of those facilities, look at the staffing needs a little bit in there. We know that the police department is asking for, or looking to do, a more detailed staffing study, so they will work with the police department to take those numbers and look at what the actual staffing needs are. So, that has been approved. They haven't started that project yet because it, the funding's been approved, but we're still working on finalizing the PSA for that. So, you will see a little bit of preliminary work on that, just a few examples of, you know, what we might do to be able to do a consolidated public safety facility, so they'll walk you through that a little bit. I think with that, what I'm going to do is I'm going to introduce Scott Nelson, who's a principal with the firm, and I'm going to turn the mic over to him, let him introduce his team, and then they'll just take you through the presentation.
Thank you. Well, thank you, staff and council, for letting us get to visit with you today. It's been a joy to work with your staff, and we're excited to kind of share with you where we are in this process. So, as Keith introduced, I'm Scott Nelson, I'm one of the partners of Park Hill Smith &amp; Cooper, Michael Howard as well, one of my fellow partners. And we're going to kind of give you an update. I wanted you to keep in mind a couple of things. One, we are still in process, so this is not a final presentation by any means, we're actually looking for your feedback and direction. And so, there'll be a couple of decision points today that we'll kind of ask for your feedback and direction specific to a couple of different items. The biggest thing's going to be talking about kind of just overall phasing of some of these sites. So, with that, at any point, stop us, tell us, slow down, back up, repeat that. There's going to be a lot of data, a lot of information that you're going to see, but we want to make sure that you're understanding what you're seeing as we progress forward. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Michael, let him get going this morning.
Thank you. So, I was going to start with kind of an overview of the agenda for our presentation. I want to start by just walking through kind of the project objectives and how we got to now, and a little bit about our approach getting here. But really, the scope of the study is to look at, where is Lewisville now? So, we're kind of benchmarking where you're at with your facility condition, we're looking at existing space usage in facilities, and then also benchmarking you to your peers. We'll also get into where are we going in terms of population growth, how that relates to staffing growth, and what that means for space demand for facilities for that staff. And then finally, we'll wrap up with how do we get there, which is really the master plan and making decisions about facilities. So, we'll look at space planning, we'll look at some scenarios for project implementation strategies, and then finally, get into some master planning and concept design. And as Scott said, how we'll wrap up is really kind of the major decision points that we need to progress this study forward and get into more detailed decisions. So, I copied this right out of the RFQ. I mean, this, basically, we're looking at future requirements, five, 10, 20 years into the future for staffing facilities. We're looking at existing land and building configurations, staffing, office utilization, and recommendations that lead to the best use of what you already have, reducing wasted space, providing programming and space planning services, and then kind of the feasibility of renovating the facilities you already have. But really, if I narrow that down just to three major principles, that we, how we're going to define the success of this project, we're looking at, number one, optimizing what you already have, right? And then, number two, maximizing their efficiency and effectiveness for the citizens of Lewisville. And then, planning some facility options that gives you flexibility and adaptability into the future. So, overview of our process, when we got initiated to get started, we looked at some previous studies, we inventoried the existing data that you have for staffing and facilities, and started with some initial visioning meetings with leadership. Then we got into kind of the assessment of where you are now in terms of the facility condition assessment and system ages of those facilities, and doing some spatialization analysis. The analysis phase really looked at the needs assessment, translating those needs into space, and then we get into the program, which is kind of the architectural space program of defining the actual space needs for each department, and then wrapping up with design options. So, we looked at two sites, as Keith already said, Civic Circle, the main two buildings we looked at was the Herring Rec Center and the municipal annex. We did fold in additional conversations about police and fire, so we'll show you some preliminary results regarding that conversation. And then we also looked at the Keighley Complex, so those departments out there, public services, parks maintenance, and then the fleet and facilities. So, last slide before I get into kind of the details of the data, it's important to keep in mind that the assessment is really comprehensive. What we mean by that is we're not just looking at the condition of these facilities, you know, we look at the utilization in terms of the capacity of those facilities and how well they're utilized in terms of head counts and seat counts, and if they're filled up, but then also the functionality of these spaces, because a lot of the buildings, or a lot of the departments have adopted space, the spaces weren't designed with those departments in mind, and so they're not highly functional for that department's use. So, where are we now in terms of facility condition assessment? The main thing we look at for facility condition is, number one, the building age, obviously every building has a life cycle. We also look at the systems with that make up that building and their condition, and then finally, the life cycle modeling, every system, like a roof for an HVAC unit has an anticipated life cycle, and so whether or not they've been replaced or not, we can kind of predict when they will need to be replaced to kind of benchmark when those facilities might need to be considered for renovation or replacement. And so, this is an overview of all the facilities in Lewisville. Not all of them were in our scope of work, but you can see that what's highlighted in green are the ones that were in our scope of the study, so we looked at most of the buildings that were in the bottom half or the older half of the full facility portfolio. So, what you see in blue, the numbers at the top, is their total age. If they have that purple at the top, that means that they've had a major renovation or addition in their history, and so you can kind of see that a lot of those in the older half have been touched in the past. So, this is a breakdown of the six major buildings in our study, and then kind of the system-by-system breakdown within those facilities. And we just ranked them, basically, if the system was in good condition, meaning they're fully operational, or they've been replaced and have a good amount of life cycle left in them, fair condition, meaning that they've in need of some kind of renewal or repair, or are nearing the end of the facility life cycles that need to be replaced in the next five years. And then if they're in poor condition, that they've already failed or in need of current replacement, or present some kind of life safety condition that endangers the occupants. And so, these are sort of the major highlights of the main concerns we have at the bottom. So, at the municipal annex, the entry doors need to be replaced, there has been some HVAC work done, but there's more HVAC work to do, and there's an old fire panel in that facility as well for the fire alarm system. At the Herring Rec, there has been some major replacements of the roofing and the HVAC at that building, however, the finishes have not really been touched since it's been constructed, so there's some really poor flooring and wall finishes, there is no fire sprinkler or fire alarm system, which is a life safety issue, and the gym equipment has not been replaced. I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's ugly.
It's ugly, which is not a term, as an architect I like to use, but, or consultant, but it is an ugly building. Fleet A, so at the fleet building, there's actually, it might be helpful to look at the graphics, there's four buildings that make up public services. The main building you see at the corner of fleet is what we call Building D, and as you work your way north, you get to Buildings C and B, and then the top building, which is basically the fleet facility building, that's Fleet Building A. That is the one that's in really the poorest condition, it has roof and window leaks, there's bad electrical wiring, it has poor ADA compliance, and there's no fire sprinklers. So, of all the buildings, that's the one that we have the greatest concern about, it's well beyond its useful life. B and C, which is just to the south, has the white roof above the red roof, that one is in need of some HVAC replacement, it also does not have fire sprinklers. And then D, which is the newest building out there, it's about 15 or 16 years old, it's at the point where its roof is needing to be replaced, and it also has some termite issues. And then Parks Maintenance, which is at the far right of the screen where Eric's pointing, it's really in pretty decent condition, has some stormwater drainage issues, some ponding, but other than that, it's not in terrible shape, but you can see the amount of yellow in fair condition. It will, based on its facility age, need some replacements and renewal in the next five to 10 years to keep it functional. So, that's kind of an overview of the age and condition of your facilities. Now, when we get into actual the facility use, and how the spaces are used, this is just one example of how we took every floor plan, looked at how it's used, department by department, position by position, so we could work out, look at staff usage for workspace versus support space. And so, this example is the first floor of the municipal annex, so green is Parks Administration, purple is ITS, and sort of goldish-yellow is the courts. And we did that to kind of benchmark the amount of workspace each staff position has, and these are the averages by department, and you can see they're all over the place, which in some cases is appropriate. Attorneys, you would expect to have more just based on how attorneys operate in the private sector. Police have one of the lowest numbers because patrol officers don't need as much space. But it was an opportunity for us to kind of benchmark where you are today as a purpose, for the purpose of planning for the future. We also incorporated some peer benchmarking, you're used to seeing these 17 peer cities, and we pulled in data from those 17 peer cities to look at their population, where they've been, where they are today, and where they're going, and then also how they staff these departments. And that helps us also to pull in data on how they design their facilities in terms of square foot per full-time employee, to help us develop some space demand projections for how other cities are doing this. So, this chart really looks at data across the state of Texas, so there's over, I think, 500 points on this map, they're all Texas cities. We've highlighted Lewisville right here, so you're at a population a little over 100,000 with 817 full-time employees, based on the latest HR numbers when this study was done. And so, what that puts you at is 7.8 full-time employees per 1,000 population. We looked at the statewide trend, which is a little bit higher, the statewide trend's 8.23 full-time employees, so for a city of the same population, we would expect the number of full-time employees to be 894. Now, over there to the right is your 17 peer cities, peer average is 8.6, so Lewisville is running a little bit leaner than the peer average. If you were consistent with those peers at 8.6, based on that population of 104,000, you'd have about 900 employees, so if you were consistent with your peer average, you'd have roughly 83 more employees than what you have today. So, in terms of staffing projections, we started with population growth. These population projections came from a previous study, the Land Use Assumptions Report, which was done last year in May. That report had a few different projections, but it was decided that the, really, the growth rate to follow is the 2% compound annual growth rate. And so, on the bottom, you see where the city's at today without the ETJ, the blue line incorporates the ETJ, and we've shown that jump between 2021 and 2022 to account for the annexation of Castle Hills. You can see the expectation or the forecast is to be at 112,000, 113,000 at that time, and then jump up 20,000 residents once Castle Hills is annexed. And so, that's really the basis for staffing projections, is understanding where you're headed with population growth. So, when we translate that to population or staffing growth, we can see this chart, this is, everything to the left of that purple line is historically where you've been, that kind of following that 2% growth rate. If we maintain a 7.8 metric, you know, 7.8 full-time employees per 1,000 residents, then that line will continue out to 2027, where the population projections end to be at a total of 956 full-time employees. Now, that's citywide, that's not just the departments in our scope. That was without annexing the Castle Hills. This one shows the annexation in 2022, and you can see how that jumps up, showing that the total city full-time employees will be over 1,120 in 2027. So, how do we accommodate that growth, and where does that, how does that play out department by department? Now, we're just looking at the departments in our scope of work. What makes up that 7.8, this is a breakdown department by department, so each department, we've used kind of a three-year historical look at that, of their own metric of full-time employees per 1,000, and so we've broken down legal, police, and so forth. Now, legal, public services, parks, ITS, and courts, this chart is based on population growth. Police and fire is a separate topic, right? Because they're less tied to population, they have some other strategies in terms of how they work out their geographies of their stations, their neighborhood policing strategy, and so forth. So, their numbers require really further study, and as Keith mentioned, there needs to be, or is planned to be, a separate study for police to do their own staffing projections. But as you can see, the greatest impact, when we look at the net growth in 2027, public services and parks really have the greatest impact, because all the additional park acreage and infrastructure that public services has to maintain through an annexation really drives up the number of field workers and maintenance staff that have to be out there maintaining those facilities. So, translating that now to space demand, one of the first things we did, I showed you the chart of the different square footages per full-time employee by department, we started to create a standard for how we would allocate space moving forward. And so, we decided on some office standards for, you know, director level, manager, supervisor, down to the worker that just needs really a three-foot, you know, bench of workspace. And so, when we do projections, we tie staff positions to office standards for the purpose of space planning. And so, here's a look at what that space demand looks like for each department, so you can see where they're at today, the actual need today based on the office standard, and then finally, where they will need to be in 2027. And if you look at the right, again, parks and public services, they have the greatest impact, not only because they have more employees, but also because they have tremendous amounts of support space for storage. So, we took that and then started to dive deeper into the space planning by meeting with each individual department director, and doing some kind of interviews and questionnaires, and working through how they use their space, and what works for them, what doesn't work for them, to help develop really an architectural space program. And so, these are just some of the topics we talked about, was their spatial needs, who they need to be adjacent to, position by position or department by department, you know, location, access and visibility to the public, privacy, security, and so forth. So, that drove us to be able to create really a spreadsheet, which is an architectural space program, looking at every single position today and into the future. And so, I've included a few of those in your packet, and we'll get to that more later, but what that ultimately led to was a series of recommended projects. And this is just one scenario, it's, we need to talk about this further, but as we talk about how we get there over the next 10 years, there's a series of projects that need to happen, there's a domino effect of what needs to happen first to renovate buildings and offset staff. And so, I'll walk through one potential scenario at Civic Circle, and then I'll walk through a potential scenario at the Keighley Complex, and then I do have some supporting graphics that were not included in your packet, so we can kind of visualize how this would actually work. But starting at Civic Circle, we know Thrive will open in 2020, and so that allows additional programming at that facility that opens up some flexibilities to sort of reimagine or reprogram the Herring Rec Center. And so, one of the first things we recommend is moving Parks Administration out of the first floor of municipal annex, and potentially moving them into the Herring Rec Center. So, that first project is renovating Herring Rec Center to move Parks Admin over after Thrive opens. What that'll do is give us free up some space in the first floor of the municipal annex, where courts and ITS currently are, they have their own growth needs, so that allows us to expand them and fill out that first floor. And then beyond that, we can start addressing the needs of police and fire. So, we did look at options on this site to build a joint public safety facility, and I'll show you some drawings of what that looks like here in a minute. Once we've built that facility, you could then demo the existing police and central fire, which moves police out of the second level of the municipal annex, and then opens up that floor to be reimagined once police is out. And so, that's kind of the one strategy, and like I said, we'll look at some drawings of that in a second. At the Keighley Complex, there was previously a study done for a feasibility of a new fleet facilities building, so that one is really the first project we'd want to see happen because that opens up a lot of possibilities to do some things at the Keighley Complex. Once that's done, we can look at expanding the Parks Maintenance Building, the existing Parks Maintenance Building, and then building some additional storage for them as well. Now, once fleet has moved into the new building, we can demo the existing fleet building, which was the Building A, I said, has, you know, really is the one that's in the worst condition. That will allow us to build a new facility for utilities and ECS, who are really squeezed into their space that they adopted, and then renovating the existing public service building, which is Building D, that one will be at a life cycle point where it needs to be renovated. And then finally, based on the staffing growth and the population growth, we know that there's a lot of space needs that will happen once Castle Hills is in place, so based on how that looks and what the infrastructure needs are in Castle Hills, we've accounted for an additional public services building to accommodate that growth. So, that's kind of all the data. The next thing we do is kind of get into actual drawings of how this is going to, how this is going to work. And so, we did a lot of sketching. This is kind of an example of where we are today, we're just talking at a high level, just site-fit tests, blocking diagrams, not really room-by-room detail. Where we want to get, by the end of the study, is really give you floor plans that are detailed, we can actually look room-by-room detailed floor plans, how we would make this happen, but we need your feedback before we get into this level of detail. So, when we look at Civic Circle, I won't go through all these, these are in your packet, but this is just an example of each individual department's space program. We looked at current staffing, future staffing, you know, staff space, support space, to really get to a bottom-line number of what the needs are. So, I mentioned a potential project being renovating the Herring Rec Center. This is the Herring Rec Center today, there's two large gyms, there's areas for racquetball courts, but that space to the right there, there's a kind of a common, just kind of hangout space, and then it's surrounded by classrooms. Now, once Thrive's open, that allows us to kind of reprogram this space, and so what we've shown is kind of a test fit of moving Parks Admin out of municipal annex and into this facility, so that teal is kind of a basic blocking diagram of how that would work, that shows how we would accommodate the future staff needs of Parks Admin in that space. We would lose that hangout space and lose the classrooms, but we would be able to maintain all the racquetball courts, the sports, the gyms, and then kind of keep the locker room as well. So, we also looked at ITS and courts in the first level. Again, this is where they are today, and then what we imagined for the future was to lose that corridor that currently exists, that takes you from the annex lobby over to sort of the jail and police area, that's really unnecessary, that connection doesn't really have to happen. The other unfortunate thing about the way ITS is set up now is they have to, they're split up across a corridor, and so we looked at this option where we would basically lose the corridor, bridge ITS together, give them room to expand where Parks Admin used to be, and then give them a new separate entrance location, separate from the public entrance off of the annex, that also allows the courtroom to sort of expand. Now, two things that this accomplishes, other than giving them, you know, a space designed for their needs and that's functional, is the courts actually have a jury waiting room across from the annex space that they don't have, they can't accommodate in their current space now. We brought that back over here, giving that back to the library. ITS also has several staff that are across the annex lobby behind the community room, and this also allows them to come back. So, this gets all the department staff together in a more functional, efficient layout. So, here's some drawings, I'm going to kind of walk through what this looks like within each building. This is the way things are today, so just to orient you, this is the municipal annex, jail, police, this is a private bank on the corner, central fire, Herring Rec Center in the back, and then a bank really across the street off of our site. So, that's where Parks Admin is today, first level of the municipal annex, that's where courts is today, and you can see that's the jury waiting room across the lobby in the library space. There's ITS and their additional staff across the lobby, and then court, sorry, the attorneys are upstairs, along with police, really police admin space. So, the first project, if you, I'll flip back and forth, and stop me if I'm going too fast, is to move Parks Administration from the first level over to the Herring Rec Center, and you can see the amount of space that that opens up in the municipal annex. Once that's open, we can then achieve the floor plan I just showed you, which is expanding courts, expanding ITS, and then pulling their space needs back into the same area. So, that's how that phasing would work. Now, when we talk about police and fire, we're going to show you a few options of how that would work to put a joint public safety facility on this site. This is where police currently occupies with their jail, and then central fire administration and central fire station. So, here's one option, and we're going to look at an option, we're going to use this corner of the site here. The first thing we need to do to accommodate that site would be to actually relocate where central fires administration is, leaving the fire station in place, and so they would be, have to be temporarily offset. Once we're able to demo that central fire administration, we can then construct a facility on that corner of the site. Now, there's a lot of, this is really a preliminary look at the space needs, there has not been an in-depth study of how much room that, or how many square feet that building needs to be. So, for the purpose of this study, we really looked at some of your peer cities and where they're at. McKinney's a good example, because what they currently have for their public, or joint public safety facility is equivalent to about where Lewisville will be at their build-out, so this is about the size of a McKinney, just for, as an example. But you can see the main space, to get the amount of square footage we need, we'd have to go vertical, two, three, maybe even four stories to get the amount of space on that corner, and then having those bays for the fire station as well. Once that's built, you could then demo the existing police and fire, and then really bring in additional parking, and then a new access drive to get into the existing parking space. So, that's option one. We looked at another option where we looked, put the facility here in the space between the library and the Herring Rec Center. And so, to do that, it has to go taller, we're showing four stories here, and we lose that connection for vehicles to come into the library, so we kind of create, fill in the gap completely. Now, there is some pros to this, where you could actually, you kind of make the Herring Rec Center and the new facility kind of a joint public use facility, where the police and fire can maybe use some of the facilities in the Herring Rec Center for their fitness and athletic needs as well, but it does create, like I said, a lack of accessibility from the road into the parking lot. Again, we would demo the facilities under this scenario, and then build lots of additional parking. Now, because we've blocked off this entrance here, we did show losing all of the roundabout landscaping that doesn't get highly used right now, and filling that in with additional parking, and maybe renovate this entrance to get more people coming into the library from here, as opposed to coming in through this entrance here. The last option we looked at...
Michael, can you go back to that?
Yes, sir.
So, Castle, of this option, staff did have concerns with the amount of fleet vehicles from PD, or maybe even fire, they would have to, to keep the public engaged with the annex and the rec center, or the Parks Admin and the gyms, they would have to keep their fleet a long way away from that, in that center core parking area there, so we weren't a huge fan of this, to go north and south down Valley Parkway, fire would either have to come out on Civic, so this was not a very favorable option. We did look at it, but that presents, presents some problems, so it's an option, but it's not one that we felt that was viable compared to the other.
So, the last option was looking at the site that currently isn't owned by the city, but is for sale, which is the bank across the street, and so if that land or that bank were to be purchased, you could have that land demo that building and really accommodate a pretty large facility, that would not need to be three or four stories on that site, however, it would be, you know, a distance from the jail, and it really doesn't accommodate the amount of patrol parking that's needed on that site, but it would fit the building itself, but then we'd be able to get the parking back on the Civic Circle site. So, those are three options we explored, really just, like I said, they're preliminary, we have to do a deeper study into the actual square footage and parking needs, but it does show you... does show you kind of a basic site fit test of how those would change that site. So I'm going to switch over to the Keighley complex. A lot of moving pieces here. Public Services has a lot of internal divisions. We broke down each internal division of Public Services. So we're looking at fleet, facilities, public works, utility line maintenance, ECS, and so forth. And then finally, Parks Maintenance, which is on that site as well. So I'll walk through a similar kind of scenario of how these projects could play out. This is at the far east end of the site. This is the existing animal shelter. Now, the previous facility or feasibility study for the fleet facility located this as a potential site, and we agree that's probably the best place for it because it allows the existing operations to continue while we build a new facility at the other end of the site. And so that's kind of a look at how that would fit down there while leaving the animal shelter, the old animal shelter in place. However, there's not necessarily a strong need to keep that facility. It's full of just old goods and storage needs right now. If we were able to demo it, we could then use that space for add a fueling station and other parking needs for fleet and facilities. So moving back to the main part of the site now, at the west end of the site, I've got, the orange buildings are what Public Services is using and greens is what Parks Maintenance is using. The white buildings are additional buildings on that site that really don't have any one department that sort of take ownership of them. This is actually right now full of records for record storage, and then that building just serves as sort of an ad hoc storage building. It's full of just stuff.
Recon though, here we come.
Yeah, yeah. So the first thing we can do after building a fleet facilities maintenance, I'm sorry, a fleet facility building at the, by the old animal shelter is really demo fleet building A, which is the one in the worst condition. Once that is demoed, because we have the new facility, we can also look at demoing the old building that's just full of junk really, and look at building a new facility for ECS and utilities, which currently occupy this space, but they're really squeezed in there, and this accommodates their future needs. Other things in this that happened in that slide, there's a lot of things happening. We've shown giving this space by moving records out and reallocating that to Public Services to meet their needs. And then we've also shown at this end of the site, new facilities for Parks Maintenance. So they're getting some new storage outside of their current storage building, a large dedicated pole barn facility for them with some laydown space. And then we've shown demoing some of their existing space so that we can expand their building. And so you can see how we've expanded that. I'll flip back and forth real quick to meet their needs, not only today because they're already need, have space needs today, but also into the future. And then also, there's a couple extra facilities we've shown, which is really bulk material storage, which currently they have additional needs, plus they would like those to be covered for both parks and for Public Services.
Where do the records go?
We've got a plan.
This gives me no heart.
So the big question is, you know, if the staffing projections play out the way we think they will, this building is also not a great building. We're looking many years in the future now where this building, once this is built, can be demolished and then build another public safety facility to accommodate staff growth on that site. So this is kind of the full build-out of where we'd see happening in the next 10 years. Lots of projects happening, some more expensive than others. There's a lot of, you know, less expensive projects like adding covered storage for things that really should be covered today but are not covered, and then more expensive projects like new facilities that will be necessary to accommodate the functionality and utilization and efficiency needs of the department. So some decision points, and I'm going to add a few to this slide as well. But number one is, you know, we've shown you kind of two scenarios for phasing projects at the Civic Circle and at Keighley. So the first question is really, you know, are those projects appropriate? Is the phasing of how we've shown those projects appropriate? And really, if we're in agreement that they are, staff can go ahead and start implementing our funding strategy for how we can accomplish those projects. Number two is, we showed you some addition, you know, three options for a joint public safety facility, using two on the existing site, one purchasing land. Which one of those do you think is the most appropriate site for that? And then how do we phase construction? Because there will be some disruption to police-fire operations, which obviously is, we need to minimize to the greatest extent possible. Lastly, is should we go ahead and expedite the construction of that fleet facilities building down there by the old animal shelter site? Because that's a critical piece to start the domino effect of allowing new things and renovations to happen at that site. And then we discussed a couple more, which is really, the study was not comprehensive of the full city. And so a lot of the impact of these projects could impact departments at City Hall. And so there was discussion of should we expand the scope of the study to go ahead and look at departments and City Hall as well? And then finally, the Hedrick House, that one, that's a building that needs to be explored for its renovation strategy as well. So those are the five decision points I'll leave you with. We can answer, I can answer any questions or we can kind of get into discussion.
That's it, Dana. And so what I would suggest is we go back and talk about it kind of campus by campus. And so I would go back first to the annex campus, and we can talk a little bit about funding first. So...
We're never getting the basement finished at City Hall.
So when you look at the current bond program, you do have money that was budgeted to add a second story to your police building. And that number is 4.5 million, and it was planned, Melinda, for what year?
I think it was not quite the end. I looked at that the other day. It was a little sooner than that.
Twenty-two, I believe. I'll find it in a minute. You've got money set aside for that second story. You have no money set aside for central fire station. Central fire station was considered by the Blue Ribbon, but it was not one of the highest priorities at the time because you had two other fire stations, right? One with Geo Bond. And so some of this planning, counsel, what you're starting to talk about is your next bond program. And I think it's really, really smart to be doing that because what we had to do was to pull together a bond program very quickly with not really the amount of analysis that I would like to see done. So is it smart to put a second floor on the police building? And the answer, these architects, they haven't done their full analysis. But I'm going to tell you, I think they would tell me no. And I know the police chief would tell me no. And just nearly every officer that's ever spoken to would tell me no.
Who would tell you yes when you talk to that person?
Well, I haven't found that person yet. So the fire chief would tell you that central fire station you saw on that earlier chart is one of your older facilities. It's in bad need of replacement. In fact, two years ago, we had the leak issue and the mold, and we spent, how much, Melinda? Well over a million, having to go in and do some gutting and renovation, and that facility has issues. So I would tell you, when you look at how all this lays out, that that central fire station should be part of your next bond program. I would suggest that this bond program will end somewhere around 2025. So you might be able to leave a few more years either direction, but somewhere around 2025. It's a planned 10-year program. And so with that, what you could do is you plan your next bond program is to move towards more of a concept of a joint facility, and I think that has a lot of benefits for fire and police on this site. They're showing me how it fits on this site. You would be able to take that money because it's for police general. You know, remember when we bought, we voted bond program, we don't vote it by the specific project, but more by the functionality. So if it's used for police purposes, you could do it. So that 4.5 million can be used for your concept design and then your preliminary design work for a public safety building. So you could begin that. So that bond money is programmed right now to be sold in FY 2223. So you could do some design work initially. And so by the time that design works done, then you're rolling into your Blue Ribbon process and then going to the voters for authorization for that bond program.
Which all makes a lot of sense because it needs to be, you know, borrowing a word from earlier, a holistic approach to the whole site and all the site's needs. And so, you know, the second, I mean, the second floor of the police department went out the window a while back as a use for that money.
So, you know, absolutely, having your dispatch center on the second floor of the building, that's not very functional. The police department would tell you having your police admin in a separate facility from your operations, that's not very good either. And so a joint facility, and the two chiefs are both here today, and they could talk to you, some of you have questions about the benefits of a joint facility. I'm sure Chief Tittle would just love to tell you about the problems he has at Central. But that was really my thought process and one of the reasons I wanted to have this analysis done. The architects are going to look more deeply into the existing buildings in depth related to this layout, but I wanted to get that concept in front of you and to try to start looking at that long range.
Where I get confused, and maybe I twisted, I tend to think of fire admin separate from Central even though they're smashed together. It looked like that was only dealing with fire admin, and Central actually stayed. Yeah, yeah, she went through that. Central just stays there.
No, what is it going to do? So he was taking half the building away, basically.
Yeah, the admin side.
Yeah, the admin side. So we can get those people moved, and they can pretty much go anywhere.
So where does that apparatus bay and everything, where does that end up?
It's going to sit there until you get your new building built.
Okay, and then where does it sit in the new building? Is it that wing that kicks off the side?
This is the new bay, the actual. We're showing one block of space for admin and the central fire station.
So the big lozenge is admin space, the small kick off the side, that's the fire, that's the station.
Just the bay.
The base. Well, bays and the sleeping quarters for your firemen.
Not necessarily. That's actually just the space needed for the bays. So that larger bond space, that would be, that's just a large block of space to show admin and central fire station. So that sort of piece that's lower, that's just the base.
This puzzle has many pieces, and one of them, as we started looking at the overall needs of police and fire, is that central fire station really tends to be moved very far. And so, I mean, chief needs it just about where it is for response time. Chief, you can give it anytime you want. So it needs to stay basically where it does look at. So that comes up very difficult. Honestly, you know, when you start trying to move it, then you're talking about pretty large purchases if you look at what's around there. So trying to make it work on this side is extremely important.
And those bays are much larger, so we're adding additional bays than what's there now, just what it looks like.
You know, we've looked around in that part of town to see if there's any space anywhere that we could relocate to, but we have to keep in mind the way our stations are spaced today and response time issues, coverage of the city and on. There's really, there's nothing out there without having to go buy something and tear it down. And if you're going to do that, our preference is to stay right where we are on that Main Valley corridor where we have a good sized street to dump out onto when we're making calls, and we have a great controlled intersection at Main and Valley to get us going north, south, and east and west. So our preference is to stay right in that area if at all possible. So to be able to make something fit on that existing property and keep all the city facilities on that one campus, I mean, I'm all in on doing that if we can make it work.
So questions about police and fire. So again, what you would be looking at is utilizing the money you have in this bond program. And with your direction, I can delay it somewhat because I don't think we would have to then sell as early as 2223, sell it for the last year of the bond program. But we can look at that in more depth. But you would utilize that money for your planning purposes so that when you're ready to go to the voters for another Geo Bond program, you would have that analysis in that planning time for a joint public safety facility. So the negatives related to that is the police department, I mean, they're going to stay in the same building they're in, and this is only 2019. So that's a number of more years that we're going to stay in this older, somewhat problematic facility.
Can you use the money that we currently have that's going to be in the bond in, what'd you say, 20?
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Go ahead and start using that to move parks and make that happen?
No, because the way that election was voted, it was by categories. You had streets, you had public safety, and you had, what was my category?
So it wasn't just infrastructure, it was definitely four?
Yeah, yeah. It's broad within that category, but it is by category. So it has to be... Now, on the park side, so let's talk about that. One question that you guys are going to have to think about is what does Fred Herring become? So you're going to build this new beautiful recreation center, Thrive, and what other facility do you need? Do you need a fully operational, full-blown rec center? Stacy and I have had a lot of conversations about that. I don't think you do. I think she supports that, but I do think you're going to need some gym space, some open play space in the racquetball courts or not, there's no racquetball courts in the new facility. Of course, I mean, people play racquetball 10 years from now, who knows? But that particular facility is old and needs some major investment. It's not sprinkler, so there's a fire safety issue with it, there's AVA problems. So we don't have dollars right now to tell you how much that's going to cost to renovate Fred Herring. So the question I have asked, though, I've asked the architects, can we invest? Is it smart to invest in Fred Herring? And the answer I got was yes. We can invest in that facility. So you have 4B money that's already being set aside, that's planned in your 4B plan for renovation of Fred Herring. It's probably not enough. There's about close to $700,000 in your 4B plan, plan for renovation of Fred Herring. I'm going to guess what we're talking about is well over a million plus, 2 million perhaps. I don't know if you have the right number.
I think the key to that is do we include a facade improvement, you know, with the renovations on the interior? I think the numbers for the interior were about 1.2 million. And then when we added the facade improvement to freshen up the appearance of the building from the outside, add some architectural features at the entrance to the building, that sort of thing, it got over 2 million.
So you can use, if that's the direction council wants to go, we can certainly use 4B cash and even 4B debt to fund that. So let's say it's, you know, 2.5 million dollars. That's a lot cheaper than a brand-new rec center. So those are some of the issues and options you have related to the annex campus. Now, once you start moving people out, and we've done this at the annex before, you are going to have some costs associated with going in and removing walls and renovating inside certainly the annex itself. You're going to have that once an inner space is there. So Parks moves over to Fred Herring once it's renovated, then you've got that first floor, you're going to renovate it. If there's any department in the city that has a space problem, it is ITS. I am saddened anytime I walk into the area where the interns sit. It's really not good. So they have, they've probably been the fastest-growing department in the city, and they really are suffering for space.
It's those double-decker desks that really bother me.
Those double-decker, yeah, people hanging from ceiling. Yeah, it's painful. So being able to move Parks Admin from the annex over to Fred Herring gives the space so badly... so badly needed to ITS. And in fact, what he did show, we've actually got some ITS staff sitting on the second floor of the annex too, they're spread out, and we've got some in City Hall also. So, they really are spread out. So, that fixes that problem. Then how that second floor gets used, I think is something we still can look at.
And we back up to Fred Herring, so we're talking about, you know, Fred Herring, we've got two full-sized gyms and two racquetball courts and then we have that common area and I'm all in board with the common areas, the poor use of the space and moving parks into that half the building, all it has. But we have this kind of open-ended question, do we need, you know, to keep the two racquetball courts and the two gymnasiums open? And I think the answer, I think the answer to that question lies in opening Thrive, waiting a year and see what the utilization is, let the utilization tell us. And if the racquetball courts aren't getting used or one of the two gymnasiums is all we need, let's use that space for something else.
You're absolutely correct, Councilman. I think that we have to step back and look at what the impacts are. And so much concern are little kids that live around in that neighborhood.
I'm not gonna take out both gyms, I'll leave one gym, but I'll tell you, for me, the two racquetball courts and the other gym are on the table and it depends on utilization.
I agree with that. I think that we just have to sit back and look at impacts of Thrive.
Yeah.
And that gym space, I know when my kids were little, got a lot of good programming in it that kept, kept, you know, that, the Wednesday, what was it, Wednesday nights or whatever it was where we could drop the kids off and I don't even, we're still doing that.
I thought, which day?
Do you still take your kids there?
Yeah, if I can, they, they chalk me up at like 13, of course, they, they look like they were 15.
Friday night out?
Yeah, the Friday, yeah, Friday night out.
Yeah, we do that too much, everyone just practices.
What about the?
But, yeah, I mean, the space that used.
I mean, is it one or two or is it like, you're signing up for a spot and they're constantly used?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Racquetball courts.
There's moments in the day when they're all being used, but there's moments in the day when they're, none of them are being used.
And is it like just six or seven people that are the ones that use it all the time and nobody else?
You know, about 20, 2025.
I can say from the indoor warrior competition, there was a, a small but faithful group for the racquetball people who, who built there.
Yeah.
They expressed concern about the future of it now, what that total number is, I don't know, they were very shades of the red course.
Right, yeah, the, the gym space is gonna, I mean, it's, gyms, both gym spaces are precious because we have so little, even with what we're gonna add with Thrive, scheduled use for pickleball, for our basketball tournaments and some of the stuff that we're doing, it is gonna be precious. I think the, we've got some opportunity to maybe repurpose if we keep the racquetball courts, the, you know, a couple of those areas to be some of the things that maybe we don't have right now. And like Donna said, there's still a contingency of families and, and youth in that area that just aren't gonna have accessibility to Thrive.
And I get that.
So, I think we need to preserve that in some manner, but I think you're right in the sense, we don't know what the impact's gonna be until Thrive is open. I don't know if we can wait that, how much longer we can wait in terms of, are we gonna let Thrive open, then we're gonna do a study and then we're gonna move us administratively over there, what sequence that is, and I think that's just what, some of the stuff we need to go explore.
I mean, we, we, we've already made the decision about accessibility. We built Thrive, I mean, I, I made the argument several years ago that if you want accessibility, you don't build one big facility, you build three or four neighborhood facilities and deal with the cost of impact on that. Exactly, and we've made that choice. So, you know, kids in other parts of towns don't have access to the library.
It's a bit like my dog park comment, you know?
Yeah.
Not every part of town, part of town has a dog park.
I can't, I can't put everything everywhere.
Right.
So, that, that I think plays into this a little bit.
And I think a little bit of this is gonna be vetted out during our cost recovery discussion is what's your expectation of programs making their own money and what is our social equity stance?
And I think to Neil's point, when Thrive opens up, that will, that will definitely create some pressures and changes on this.
Oh, yeah, so, so my thoughts and, and one of the things that, you know, and Donna and I are discussion, discussing is I, and I know, and I know it's difficult, is that Herring will not be utilized in the same manner that it is now. Is that space valuable? Yes, because programming will be retooled.
Yes.
And like, you know, I've, you know, we've gotten some kickback in terms of, oh, you're taking away our workout place in terms of where we have the fitness equipment. Well, I mean, you're getting the, one of the best fitness areas I've ever seen built in the recreation facility a mile and a half down the road.
Well, 2.3.
Yeah, 2.3.
I live across the street.
Okay. So, so, I mean, I think we're just gonna hear that and just, there's some discussions to be had on it.
But you said though it delays the admin move, why does it delay that? Are you taking the locker room too?
Uh, no, we're, we're trying to actually expand and deal with some of the ADA issues, I think is what we had kind of planned in that initial look and, I mean, for my thing, I'm just thinking economy of scale, mobilization and all that kind of stuff.
Because I'm thinking all the space that I think you're gonna go into, you could have tomorrow.
You're talking about it administratively?
Admin at Herring.
Well, the real problem is when we start that construction project, remember what they're working out is the front of the building, so access is gonna be very limited. You don't want little kids running through the construction site.
Oh, come on, strength and agility training, I mean, that's.
I'm just not creative.
No climbing skills.
All right, and we can't move any sooner than when Thrive opens because everything right now is in there, everything, so it's pretty full.
So, the nature sequencing.
The one thing I had a question about, like, I've used those meeting spaces and they're probably the more affordable options for meeting spaces, the rooms in there, like 50 bucks or something like, it's not really not that expensive. When we're, when we're doing this, are we gonna make sure like maybe in the police, police facility like Flower Mountain, we're gonna have some kind of community meeting room that will replace that because you're losing, I think, six rooms?
You're putting them in Thrive though.
And you've got meeting rooms at the library.
And the community room still exists.
Community room's still there. I think that that would just be a point of planning, that we would make sure that we plan that type of space.
Yeah.
And to the public safety, public safety building has a few limitations. There is a safety and security issue with the general public, so we could probably plan some meeting space there if that was council mission.
Carrollton's got a great setup in their new public services where you walk in the front door and, and there's a lobby and immediately to your left is, is the classroom and it's divenable, I think, into three sections.
So, anytime you have a meeting space, you gotta be prepared to snap it because when do a lot of meetings occur in the evening?
Yeah.
So, if it's a, in a facility where people work eight to five, that can be somewhat problematic. So, it's just, it's, it's planning, it's one step at a time.
Right.
So, what we've shown you here is a phased approach and really the first key is Thrive gets built and Thrive gets open.
Yep.
Then we step back and we start looking at Fred Herring and then we really do a full-blown study and plan for Fred Herring. We know the exact cost, we look at where those costs are gonna come from, likely it's your 4B fund and we get that renovation done, we get Parks folks moved, and you're gonna renovate the first floor of City Hall and get ITS and courts in the annex. So, that, that would be that sequence.
So, just to echo a comment, I realize she'll take care of this, but I once before in a somewhat different subject said we're hitting the 4B fund awfully hard and I hear 4B fund being hit pretty hard on several things over the course of the last three days, so I'm just concerned that, you know, how many things are the 4B fund going to fight?
It's always a good question. I do have close to 700,000 sitting in the 4B right now playing for Fred Herring.
Okay.
But you just heard him say that's not enough.
Right, oh, right.
So, that, we're gonna have to step back and look at where that funding can come from.
So, I also heard that the architects believe that the bones on Herring are, are strong.
I'll let them talk to that.
We go back to the exact age, I think it's close to 40 years old, but you know, buildings can, commercial buildings can last more than 40 years, sorry.
The exact age, 37 years old, so obviously buildings we know can last well beyond 40 years, the trick is the systems within them, right? Now, Herring has already had investment, so there's already a new roof and there's already new HVAC, so you've already put money into it. So, I wouldn't say putting more money into it's a bad idea because if you were to lose that building and say, let's say we demoed it to put the public safety facility there, you're losing some good money you've already invested to extend its useful life. So, the only reason you wouldn't wanna keep Herring is if, you know, you had a totally new programmatic reason to use it that just does not fit into that space and needs to be reimagined, but what, I think what we're discussing is there is some reason to keep those programming in place, given the fact there's already been investment in HVAC and roofing, there's reason to go ahead and continue to invest in it and reshape it through a less invasive, you know, renovation.
Glad to hear. I was, I was worried that we were kinda sitting there with a bit of an albatross with that building, so I'm, I'm glad to see that kinda comment come back.
Now, it is ugly though.
Sorry, but thank you, that was, see, I've already retrained this arc.
Sorry, Fred.
Ugly.
Sorry, Fred.
What are we gonna, we're gonna like put some chalk paint on the walls and have people paint the outside facade, we'll go that route?
I was just gonna take the F off the front of Fred.
Yeah.
And then it would be the red.
Red Herring building, it'd be perfect.
So, that would be the annex campus, did I miss anything on that? And based on your direction today, we're gonna go back and to Neil's point, we're gonna really dive into that 4B fund again and look at what it can support. Now, one thing we talked about at this retreat was not spending as much money on the nature center.
Yes.
So, that frees up some money that could go to other uses, whether that be Fred Herring or trails or what that might be, we'll be seeking more council direction on that.
I have one question about the, of the civic circle complex. You know, the bank on the corner, the, was it C Bank, right, by the fire station, whatever?
That small bank.
Would there be any way of incentivizing them to move to the old Chase Bank on the other corner?
They're not, they're not operating there anymore.
Aren't they operating?
No, they're operating.
Chase is gone.
Chase is gone, oh, okay.
What I'm wondering is if, if we, there would be something that we could do to move them, we talked about buy, you know, possibly buying the property across the street. If we could get that bank to move across the street, then we could have that whole.
I think there may be a time to talk with council in executive session about some of these properties.
Okay.
I mean, there's different, he showed you three different options of how this could be set up, but there are even more than that. So, I think that would be.
Those come with cost.
And that sort of, that sort of, sort of glared out at me, just that little.
But if we can get it done without buying a property, and that's a corner property on two major streets and we can get it done without buying property, I mean, if we're going to make the Cadillac version, yeah, but I mean, I don't know that we've got Cadillac money right now to just go buy a corner lot.
So, that's future discussion and that's something we'll continue to look at in the planning process.
So, one other comment, this is like throwing two cents in as a junior designer, but the first thought is that closing that second entry off from civic circle to the back side of the library to me is a big giant no. And then the other thing is that although this picture and you can blow up the parking lot, makes it look like the parking lot gets well utilized, really if you start counting the empty spaces and the wasted space, and I'm not against, you know, having some trees, it's not a great use of space. There, I've always wondered if we couldn't make better use of some of this parking area.
And those will be all the issues that we need to delve into.
Yeah.
Okay, so that is the annex. Let's talk about key lead. So, several years ago, council set up a general fund reserve plan and that general fund reserve plan allows us to set aside dollars every fiscal year for certain facilities. So, one is the fleet building. So, we have money that's being set aside not only for general fund reserves but for for utility reserves also. So, based on the plan we have laid out today, you would have set aside enough money by 2023 to build an 11 million dollar facility. Now, the question is, and I'll let Keith speak to this, about, wait until 2023?
Yeah, you heard the architects talk about the condition of the existing facility and, and it is the oldest building out there at, at our complex. It's, it's tasked to do some things that it's really not very well suited to do. One of the things that we've talked about internally is potentially asking for an action step to build an additional bay. Right now, we are doing the maintenance on all the fire apparatus out there, we don't have a bay out there where we can open the hood of a fire truck and elevate it up in the air to work on it. So, when we start talking about, well, how much would that be? And we're talking about a million plus dollars to add to a facility that is already beyond its useful life. And so, the, the real discussion is, is it, is there a way to try to expedite being able to move them into a facility that, that truly supports the operation? Our fleet guys do a, do a tremendous job, I'd put them up against any city's fleet operations, but, or, or continually tasking them with more and more and, and they need an appropriate facility to be able to do it.
So, council, so if there's some interest in escalating that, the only answer I can give you today is Gene and I are gonna have to dig and step back and look at where that funding might come from. So, one thing was, you know, what percentage is used by the utility operations, what percentage is used by the general fund operations, and we've got pretty much like a 60, 40 split on that?
I think it's more 70, 30.
Is it about 70, 30 split on that? So, that could be reevaluated, sometimes utility fund has a little bit more flexibility. And there may be some other programs that you might delay, so we're also setting aside money for your basement.
Let's just be real about this. Let's put bowling alley now.
So, so your basement is actually planned for 2025.
Yep.
Is that right, Gene, 2025? And so, it's two parts, so the basement, we're talking about the basement of City Hall and the basement of City Hall, its plan was, it would be multipurpose. So, remember, and, and I am asking them to, and asking people for money to go in and do an analysis of City Hall, I do think we need to do that, but right now the plan is that you have a basement that's unfinished and so what we would do would be to start moving conference rooms to the basement of City Hall. So, that starts freeing up space within the operating departments as you add any additional positions. And so, your basement becomes a conference center. In addition, it becomes your emergency operations center. And in your bond program, we sold 1.2 million in geo-funds, geo-bonds to invest that additional money that's necessary for an emergency center operation. But in your general fund reserve program, you're setting aside a little over 1 million, 1.1, no, excuse me, 4.5 million total for the finish out of the basement. Could delay that and put that towards the fleet to make the fleet happen soon. And, and another question would be, if you're doing a public safety building.
Is your EOC go there?
Is your EOC there?
Yeah.
And you don't need another backup. As, as you know, I like to plan and double plan and so to have another alternative at the basement of City Hall is not a bad option either. Now, Melinda will tell you that Dinko 911, they've just recently built a hardened facility. So, if a tornado came through and took down our facility, we'd be able to move our operations over to, to Dinko 911. That's probably a pretty good plan. So, maybe you don't need to sell that additional geo-bond for the emergency operations centers and the center in the basement of City Hall, that money can go to your public safety, joint public safety.
Right, you just need to get, get a memo of understanding with Dinko 911.
Yes, that's exactly that. And so, the basement, we still have two offices, I think, that, that are vacant, that right on the second floor, Claire, I think, two, two offices are vacant.
Yeah.
Two offices are vacant in City Hall and, yeah, and then on the bottom. So can't wait forever. And it also answers what Brandon brought up related to rentable space for meetings. Because that conference center we saw is not only being used for city staff, it's something that we would be able to open to the public also. But if you tell me that you want to escalate the Fleet Building, I can go in and start looking at that general fund reserve and try to push more of that money to the Fleet Building and figure out what that impact is on the basement of City Hall.
I see the gears turning. I kind of, I mean, you got my interest in going that route.
In going that route?
Yeah.
Now, I look at it from a, you know, where are our biggest space impacts when Castle Hills comes online? And if we don't, if we're not working on this stuff-
Yeah.
-now, and we're waiting for a bond package later, not only are you crammed into a small space, it's not really working for what you need now, but you've added, you know, 25 more employees-
Exactly.
-into the exact same space.
With nowhere to work.
Public services will have the largest impact related to staffing-
Yeah.
-other than what's already happened in the fire department and what will happen at this time. So I'm hearing move ahead, escalate the Fleet Building, start working on that plan and bring that back to you.
See how this all, all the funds shuffle.
Yeah.
Anything else, Keith, on that?
You mentioned City Hall, so-
I might add on Keighley, that there are some smaller renovations or additions that they may see in their upcoming budget requests, as we can do some of those Keighley site smaller ones.
Yeah.
That may be what-
Some of the painting and-
Out of utility funds, so just in case you see that during the upcoming budget.
That's a good point.
Yeah, two of those things for public services is that covered material storage. That will prolong the ability for us to have materials onsite that stay dry and protected. And then this covered space here, that would be to cover some of our equipment that sits out in the elements today, that'll extend the life, the usability of it. And then I know Stacy will probably be looking to add some of her park facilities as well. Those ones that, that fit in, you know, this is a critical piece down here, but these open spaces can be filled in as those needs arise, and some of those are current needs.
Stacy, you want to talk to me about park maintenance at all?
No, I would just say that our park maintenance team probably right now is next to IT, the next most squished team out there in terms of their meeting rooms and work areas and locker rooms. So we do need that. But we also experience some of the same things that Keith's team does in terms of, we've got some equipment and supplies and materials, and it's competing of, okay, well, which one do you store under the covered areas right now? And so I think we could, you know, realize long-term savings if we're able to protect that material and equipment underneath some covered storage.
One additional piece on Stacy's facility here is this is an extension of that office space and meeting space actually out into the parking lot. And the reason for that was we were trying to preserve, there's some nice post oaks around the outside of that facility. Logical piece would be move that way, but it takes down some very nice trees. And so the concept plan here was, well, we can extend this way. Obviously, it needs a lot more detailed study and that sort of thing before it gets done. But that was a kind of an innovative approach that they came up with.
So are there any other questions about either the Annex Campus or the public services campus? What I'm hearing is you like the concept of the joint public safety facility. We should move forward with that plan and look at how that fits within this current bond program and how it impacts a future bond program. We should escalate the Fleet Building and then bring back to you what those ramifications look like, and that'll probably be done with the budget process.
Okay.
Gina, am I forgetting anything else? As she said, other things that we can absorb as we move forward related to the public safety building, excuse me, public services building, we can do that, and we'll start looking at that year by year.
Yeah, I'd hate to get into a bottleneck where we need, we desperately need to add staffing because we've added Castle Hills and we've got facilities constraints that make it that we just can't.
Yeah, the other issue is out there, and Eric can probably answer this maybe better than I can, is what, what facilities might be available in public are out in Castle Hills? I mean, there are, there is a public services lot out there. I'm just not knowledgeable of what that space looks like. I know the District 1A, they are actually in leased space, so that-
Yeah, they're in leased space.
Yeah, that won't come to the city.
Was it two, is it two trailers, three trailers out there? That's not an actual building.
So this is the, this is, this property here is owned by the freshwater district. So tower, ground storage, where opportunity comes in. So this land, pump buildings, so pump station, there's some office space here. So this land will assign to the city of Lewisville. We understand that this is something we found through discovery that they do have a yard north of 544 that's, that's available that I think is, is titled to the Denton County Freshwater Supply District. This was never plotted and not site planned, but let's just kind of forget we're saying that. So as Keith and Stacy go through their due diligence about what properties and buildings assign over to the city, I think we'll have that probably in the next 60, 90 days, a better understanding, but those two facilities definitely will.
So, probably not, but do you want space there? I don't know.
Well, I think, yeah, I think you do. You've got to figure out a logistic of, you know, this is over there while I'm over here. But I think you could, I think there's an answer there that makes sense, not just a compromise.
That's exactly right. So-
I've been, I've been in that space. I mean, it's just a pre-bab space, so, I mean, it'll do, but-
Okay, so that is the Annex Campus, that is the Keighley Campus. And so what I would like to do is one more piece of this, and that is City Hall. And council may absolutely say no to this, but I think that you need to look at the third floor. The third floor is the most wasted space. Mayor, you'll remember that was designed really to be meeting space. The mayor's formal office is up on the third floor, as well as actually a more functioning office. I think we've never had a mayor that's actually used that. So it's interesting, for meetings, it's terrible, because the way you have lighting and everything-
We've never had a mayor.
And the noise that comes from the second and the first floors up to the third, it's just not very useful space. There may be no way to cost-effectively make it more useful space, but I would like an opportunity to step back and look at that, to see if that, that could create some additional futures.
You know, I've always visualized, could you do something like, like we did with the Hive and put in like a glass wall to mitigate the sound? And then, you know, work, that still gives you the visual continuity.
Absolutely.
And then put, you know, some space in there, whether that's, you know, a cube farm or more management space or, but it's, yeah, it's a horrible waste of space now.
Yeah, it's terrible. The only time I remember it being used well was the grand opening of City Hall, and it was a beautiful area for the food, for the grand opening event.
And it works a lot for western days. You got the patio and all that, so I mean, that's, for that kind of, that's what, twice a year, three times a year where we have something up there?
And the occasional retirement or something. But I mean, it's, yeah.
And it doesn't really work well for that because of the noise in the video.
And otherwise, it's incredibly underutilized.
Yeah, it is. So with your permission, I would like to look at another phase. Keith's going to have to negotiate a last phase of the contract and-
Yeah, and we've asked them to prepare a proposal for that so that we would know-
We could move the mayor's office to the wellhouse.
Now, you're going to have to fight the cops for that. They worry. Every time we touch it, we went in and park it, and they were like, are you moving us out now? We're really happy with you there.
Right?
Yes. It is.
Okay. Oh, okay, yes, okay. Now, I am doing this for Councilman Danny because he's brought this up several times, and I just want to bring it up while he's still on the council. He talks a lot about the need for a place for weddings. And we always thought that, well, the courtyard of the MCL would be nice. I think we've had maybe one wedding reception there in all the years that we've had that facility now. I think Wayne Purson Plaza would be nice. I don't think we've ever had, other than impromptu weddings, have we ever had the space rented?
Well, wedding.
Okay, one time, one time. But the place that actually was thought to be our wedding venue at one time was the Hedrick House. So the Hedrick House is actually, was at one time, a beautiful home. Its famous architect-
O'Neill Ford.
O'Neill Ford. In fact, there was a layout in the Dallas Morning News a couple of years ago about other homes in Dallas that are designed by-
Ford did Dallas and Denton County.
Yeah, and you could just look at the pictures and you could see the Hedrick House. The Hedrick House, when I first started working for the city, kind of set out by itself. It's beautiful, you know, woods around it. And you walked in the front door and you had this, this beautiful, you know, most of the living area is glass, and you have a beautiful fireplace. And then you walked into this kitchen, it had beautiful Spanish tile. It was actually a fabulous facility, I think would be a really nice venue for weddings. The outside of the facility, I think Stacy, you've been out and you've done some sprucing up of that outdoor area. You had a little wedding kind of-
Right. And that wedding arbor is kind of in a state of disrepair. We've actually been talking with Francis about doing some, you know, a couple thousand dollars worth of updates out there. But we have been going in and doing some restoration of the turf. You can see we're experiencing some erosion out there. But we've also put a nice split rail fence along the edge of, like, you'd be hitting the fence right now, along that property. And if you drive out there, it's really kind of makes a nice demarcation, a little bit more welcoming than maybe that pipe fence rail that's on the other side. But yeah, you know, we've talked about it several times, and it's actually in our master plan to go out there and restore this to what it once was and use it as a wedding facility. I mean, I think it really, if it was, if we did invest a little bit more money in it, I think we could make a lot of money off of it in terms of making it a premier wedding venue in, in the city of Lewisville.
It's booked pretty heavily.
It is booked pretty heavily. It's, it's not, but you know, it's not a great space right now, so our capacity to charge what we should isn't there because it's not, it doesn't have great connectivity in terms of where you can-
Kitchen.
Yeah.
We don't have a space like that.
Yeah, the kitchen's kind of 80s. I mean, no offense to the 80s.
But it's a kitchen.
But-
It's got a lot of counter space.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got a lot of counter space. It could, it could be a really great space, but the white paneling is a little offensive.
It was-
And the windows are bad.
And covering it with formica.
And then putting that horrible paneling in.
That horrible paneling, it's just, and if you go into a meeting out there, it's just atrocious because when the air conditioning system comes on, it's like, you better have everybody on mic because you can't hear a thing. It's just not worked well for the new facility.
And Liz brought a good point. One of the things that we've talked about is a new entrance point, so you don't have to go through the alley or way back through the neighborhood, which we've gotten a couple of complaints for when there's large events back there, you know, people spilling into there. So I think there's, there's some study to be done and-
I don't think, there's, we don't have any interior pictures before, do we?
I don't know.
She has wedding pictures.
But was it?
You have, were they before?
It was before it got Fred House.
Really?
Yes.
The fireplace.
Yes.
We need to get those on file.
We need to get them, because, I mean, I, in my head, I thought, there's a lot of O'Neill Ford stuff to look at that you could reference, but we really didn't know exactly what the inside looked like.
And I, I purchased it in 1994, and it was renovated a couple of years after that.
You know, this is a house that you could potentially get National Historic Registry for.
Yes, you could.
You can go back to your family, generations of how they get some of their photos, too.
Yeah, I don't know, Judge, do you have any?
Let's not get a registry until we've redone everything.
Yes. Get it done first. Get it done first.
Can't get rid of that family.
Yeah, well, yeah. I want that family out of there.
So if there is interest, council, I'd want to start looking, working with Stacy more on what those costs look like, when we might be able to afford to do something like this, and fold that into our long term.
I'd be, I'd be curious what a venue like this, when it's in top shelf, what, what the market commands.
And marketed, because there's a lot of marketing potential.
Right, yeah, my thought would be, as we get in there, we renovate it, and then we work with a third-party administrator to do that.
Yeah.
And we contract it out.
What we would anticipate to generate from that.
Yeah.
We'd have to do some research.
Yeah.
Over seven per viewers.
When I talk about marketing, too, I mean, my opinion is you can draw people from well outside this area to use that facility.
And quite frankly, your Old Town, Main and Mill folks, the ones that are in this industry, could be a great revenue generator or referral source for us.
Should be.
Should be. Should be. Do it all here.
We're lucky to have it. And I think the other thing, too, it's always a shame that we had to tear down the other O'Neill Ford, which was next door to me, but it was just, I mean, the house was ruined.
It was ruined, that shit.
So, but at least we have one.
Yeah, it could be absolutely beautiful. So, so with your direction, I would go back and start working on cost factors and running that into our long-term plan.
Okay.
Keith, have we covered everything?
I believe that's everything, yeah. Did y'all have anything else?
Thank you very much. I mean, this architectural format, I will tell you, I've been extremely impressed with it.
The staging is really-
Yeah.
Really, I mean, there was a lot of moving parts that made sense.
And they put up with me.
Like Gina.
Okay, thank you very much. So, council, that is our last item. Mayor, if you would like to take a break, we'd like to do a wrap-up and go back through the direction that we've received throughout the retreat.
Take ten minutes break.
Yep.
Take ten minutes break.
Thanks.